Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Escondido City Council. Please rise with us for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the flag salute.
Yes, please join me in a moment of reflection. We came together tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to serve here in the city of Escondido. We come together tonight as a diverse community, a community of backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence, and different futures, yet one common goal, that is the betterment of this city. We come together tonight to seek guidance, wisdom, and discernment during deliberations that transpire this evening. In doing so, we lift up Councilmember Morosco, Councilmember Garcia, Councilmember Martinez, Deputy Mayor Garcia, and Mayor White. May they be granted peace and wisdom as they lead our city into a bright and prosperous future. Amen.
We will call this meeting to order and do a quick roll call. Councilmember Morosco?
Present.
Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember Martinez?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Garcia?
Here.
And I, Mayor White, am here. We are going to skip tonight's presentations and move on to our Parks and Recreation Month proclamation. If you have any staff here that want to join me up at the front, please do so. Am I good now? Okay, good. Before I proclaim the day, I just wanted to say thank you to each and every one of you for all that you do for the city of Escondido. Parks and Recreation are an integral part of the city. I know myself and my family are blessed by all of the work that you do, so thank you very much. And with that being said, Parks and Recreation Month, I, Dane White, Mayor of the City of Escondido, County of San Diego, and State of California, do hereby proclaim July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, members of the City Council, for recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month. My name is Robert Rose. I am the Assistant Director of Community Services, and it's my honor today to receive this proclamation on behalf of my colleagues in Community Services, as well as Public Works and our Parks Division, and the Park Rangers as well. So, thank you very much. Parks and Recreation is vital to the success, growth, and quality of life in this community. We offer a place to connect with nature. We provide recreational outlet to develop new skills and social connections, as well as create a sense of community by establishing safe places. As we celebrate July as Parks and Recreation Month, we invite you to explore Escondido through our Passport Scavenger Hunt that we have. So, you can complete your passport by visiting various locations, public spaces throughout the city, including the Escondido Sports Center, the East Valley Community Center, the Escondido Public Library, Washington Park Pool, the Park Avenue Community Center, Queen Caliphia's Magical Circle Garden, the Escondido History Center, Dixon Lake, and of course, here at City Hall. You can pick up your passport at any one of those particular facilities or download that from the city's website. Once you've collected all the stamps, and I have the City Hall stamp right here, if anybody's interested, you then bring your completed stamped passport to City Hall, and you get to receive some great fun swag. And the event does, of course, run through the entire month of October. We're not in October, it's July, month of July. I don't want to push any farther than what I have to for the year. We have some really great and amazing activities that are coming up in the month of July. Just really quick, including our Glow Party, which is happening this Saturday. We have now opened for recreational swim on the Fourth of July over Washington Park Pool. That's something that's brand new for us this year. Anybody who's interested in hitting the rink to bring part of the pass, we do have roller skating that'll be going on at the Escondido Sports Center. And then, anybody who's interested in jamming to some tunes, we will also have the Peter Seltzer Orchestra that will be over at the Park Avenue Community Center during the month. So, thank you very much in honoring us as July is Parks and Recreation Month.
Council, want to come down for a photo? Okay, do we have a report out of closed session?
We do. Thank you, Mayor. The City Council heard two matters in closed session this evening. The Werner versus City of Escondido matter has been continued to another date. All council members were present. One item is appropriate for a public report at this time. In the matter of the claim of Jay Norris versus City of Escondido, Workers' Comp Claim Number 22-164106, the City Council approved a settlement of that claim in the amount of eighty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents by a vote of five to zero. Nothing further to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, public comments?
Yes, Bryant Rumbaugh.
Okay, how is everybody? It's been a minute since I've been in here. I like the glasses, by the way. So, as you recall, I've come in a couple times to really kind of, you know, get my concerns out as an American. You know, I want to see the money taken out of politics. And what I will say is this has been going on, political campaigns. What this is, the last few years, and I've met some very brilliant people, friends of mine, that really have value systems that I believe I share. And, you know, one of them actually, there's two I'm going to quick discuss. One of them, you know, he posed a question. How good can it get? So, I want everybody to just kind of think about that real quick. How good can it get if, A, this experiment that we had in America, we still have in America, the experiment of self-governance, okay? If we all kind of not only engaged ourselves, but maybe, let's just say, adhered to those value systems maybe that we aspire to be, we want to see. You know, just kind of like your little mural there from the, ironically, the United Nations, you know, live by the golden rule, you know, kind of that type of thing, but, you know, they left out a pretty big chunk there, you know, love thy God first and foremost. But, with that being said, how good can it get if we in America set an example for the rest of the world? There's a lot of people that recognize that society's got a lot of problems. We're going to be talking about a couple of them here tonight. You know, what I will say is that you guys, as legislators, as, you know, a governing body, you know, these societal problems, we're going to have a tough time having you guys fix those for us. It's up to us, the people, okay? And taking the money out of the campaigns, becoming responsible, you know, I gave you guys a little bit of a plan, and, you know, it's something I had been thinking about for a long time as I kind of talked. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was another good friend of mine. What she came up with was, you know, right now, we in America, we're coming into this election season, you know, and ironically, you know, American citizens, we weren't even supposed to be voting for president. But, you know, we have the, you know, the Biden 2024, the Trump 2024, people are putting all their hopes, their dreams, and hopes of, let's just say, a savior, you know, and really relying on men, which has not worked out very well for humanity up to this point. But, you know, what she posed, what she would like to see, and I would love to see it, we the people 2024. If America set an example for the world, what a self-governing society is supposed to look like. Because all of us, every person in this room, we were not given a good example. We are, right now, shortchanging these young kids, and ourselves. We can do better. And taking the money out of the political campaigns is the hook that everybody needs to need, it's going to get them excited about it.
Thank you.
No for the public on this item.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Items one through nine are on consent. Items on consent are approved in a single motion. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as is? Motion second? Great. Please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved, five zero.
Okay, on to our public hearings. Item number 10 is a short form rent increase application for West Winds Mobile Home Park, and public hearing is open.
Okay, good evening, members of the Rent Review Board. My name's Danielle Lopez. I'm the Housing and Neighborhood Services Manager, and joining me this evening is Code Compliance Officer Stephen Jacobson. For your consideration this evening, we have a short form rent increase application for West Winds Mobile Home Park. The board is asked to receive the presentation, hear public testimony, and make a determination concerning the rent increase request in accordance with the factors set forth in Escondido Municipal, I'm sorry, Escondido Mobile Home Rent Control Ordinance and the Mobile Home Rent Review Guidelines. Staff will be recommending approval of the short form mobile home rent increase application and adoption of Rent Review Board Resolution Number 2024-61. So, a little history on our mobile home rent control. On June 8th, 1988, the Escondido residents voted to approve Proposition K to enact mobile home rent control in the city of Escondido. Under Prop K, if a park owner wants to increase the rent of a mobile home rent controlled space, they must file an application with the city to obtain approval from the Mobile Home Rent Review Board. In 1997, the board adopted changes to the Mobile Home Rent Review Board Guidelines to allow for the acceptance of a short form application. The short form is an abbreviated and less administratively burdensome application process for park owners and for the city staff. Through a short form application, a park owner can request a rent increase based solely on the change in the San Diego Metropolitan Area Consumer Price Index, or the CPI, versus the long form application, which takes several factors into consideration, including CPI, rent comparisons, capital improvements, changes in property tax, changes in utility costs, and changes in operating and maintenance expenses. In order to be eligible for a short form, it has to have been at least 12 months since the last rent increase application was deemed complete. The park owner's request has to apply to 100% of the rent controlled spaces in the park, and the rent increase may not exceed 90% of the increase in CPI since the last application was granted, or 8%, whichever is less. So, West Winds Mobile Home Park is an all-age park. It has 66 spaces with only eight spaces subject to rent control. The remaining spaces are on long-term leases or are owned by the park. Their last rent increase was approved in June of 2023, and the average increase at that time was thirty-six dollars and nine cents, or 6.56%. Here are some of the amenities that are offered at the park. There is a furnished clubhouse for the residents to use. There's also a beautiful swimming pool that was just recently resurfaced in January of this year, and they also offer coin-operated laundry machines. And this is a summary of the park's application. This request covers a 12-month period of consideration. As I said before, the last increase was approved in June of 2023, with an average increase of thirty-six dollars and nine cents per space per month. The park is currently requesting the maximum allowable increase of 90% of the CPI, which is equal to 4.275%. The average rent for the eligible eight rent-controlled spaces is currently 58626, and the average increase with this application is twenty-five dollars and six cents, with increases ranging from sixteen dollars and 27 cents to thirty-four dollars and 45 cents. As always, we hosted a resident meeting. The meeting was held on June 3rd at 6:00 PM. Individual notices were sent out to all the affected spaces notifying them of the increased application, of the resident meeting, and then of this public hearing date tonight. No residents attended the meeting, and therefore, no resident representative was identified. And then additionally, since the public meeting, we've received no phone calls, no emails regarding concerns about the increase, and prior to the meeting this evening, no one signed in to protest the increase. At this time, I'll turn it over to Stephen to cover the code compliance inspection.
Good evening. On June 3rd, a lighting inspection was performed by Code Compliance Division. Two lighting violations were identified. On June 4th, an inspection of the common area was conducted by the Code Compliance Division, Housing and Neighborhood Services staff, and Park Management. One violation was identified. There was a broken water valve leaking in the men's restroom. A notice was mailed to the park manager and an owner informing them of the violations. According to the Mobile Home Rent Review Board Guidelines, no increase granted for any park shall go in effect until any existing code violations are corrected. A reinspection was conducted, and as of June 17th, 2024, all violations were corrected.
Thank you, Stephen. So, this application meets the eligible criteria for submittal of a short form rent increase request. Staff recommend approving the application and adopting Rent Review Board Resolution 2024-61, granting an increase of 90% of the change in CPI, which is 4.275%, and equals an average increase of twenty-five dollars and six cents per space per month. That concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions, and we also have Park Management here if you have any questions for them.
We're going to hold off on questions for the council. I'll invite Park Management up. If you want to take, what is it, 10 minutes? You have 10 minutes to address the council, then we'll move to questions.
I am Jim Yance, and I'm the owner's representative for Thompson Properties, which manages West Winds Mobile Home Park. I thank you for considering our application and would happily answer any of your questions if you have something.
Do we have a representative from the park here to speak at all, residents?
No, we do not. No residents attended the meeting, and no one signed up to be the resident.
Okay, then I will open it up for questions.
We have one public comment, but if you'd like to...
Yeah, let's do the public comment first, and then we'll open it up for questions. So, I'll call you right back up here shortly.
Bryant Rumbaugh.
Okay, still Bryant Rumbaugh. So, you know, the reason why I'm up here is I have been, like I said, the last couple of years, trying to become more engaged and learning about how the metrics. I just learned about the metrics for this particular situation, the Consumer Price Index. You know, I did find it ironic that it wasn't barely a year ago that we had to, you guys had to go through this sequence again. So, based on what the Consumer Price Index is, you know, obviously, everybody in here is a consumer in one way or another, and a basket of groceries does cost more. Let's just look at what's gone on. You know, here in America, we definitely, you know, are needing of a little bit of a different financial role situation. We don't exactly have a stable situation regarding our currency. So, everybody's being affected. I have no position on this, but I just want us all to look at kind of the big picture here. I do find it ironic that, ironic's the wrong word. I do find it, I would have wished that people from the Mobile Home Park would have showed up. You know what I'm saying? That's a little bit of an example of them being unaware, unengaged, whatever, that type of thing. But, you know, I'm not going to tell this man how to run his business, but, you know, we definitely need to deal a lot in tackling a lot of these big problems, and having a currency that doesn't devalue year over year the way it has is a big step in that. So, that's pretty much what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Park Management? No, 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 no? Okay, thank you. What about for staff? Anybody? Or does anybody want to make a motion? Move to approve, stack. Thank you. And a second, please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved, five zero.
All right, thank you. Move on to item number 11. Excuse me. Close that public hearing, and we'll open the next one. Item number 11, consideration and introduction of ordinance regulating encampments on public property.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Mike McGinnis, your city attorney. This evening, for your consideration, is a proposed ordinance designed to assist city departments, and in particular, law enforcement and public works, in addressing the issue of homeless encampments on public property, an issue that has plagued most cities over the past several years, given in part to uncertainties in the law created by a couple of court cases, which I will discuss in more detail this evening. In introducing this proposed ordinance tonight, I will discuss the issues we are facing with encampments, discussing how the ad hoc Subcommittee on Homelessness has tried to work through this issue, give you some background on recent court case decisions that are often cited in the news relating to camping on public property, quickly discuss a couple of relevant city ordinances on the books today, walk you through the proposed ordinance Number 2024-06, including the pre and post-abatement notices that are required by this new law, and finally finish with recommendations. Your police department and public works departments have done the best they can keeping encampments to a relative minimum in this city. And by that, I mean, when compared to other cities and given the constraints of staff availability and resources, and acknowledging that it is near impossible to have no visible encampments anywhere, we have not seen overextended and sustained periods of time entrenched tent cities on our sidewalks and along our roadways. I'm not trying to minimize or ignore the ones that we have had to deal with, and there are many encampments that are hidden, nor do I wish to suggest that the public complaints we regularly receive are not well-placed. But our city staff have tried to maintain a sustained approach to enforcement to reduce the likelihood of the Los Angeles Skid Row type of problem that we see in the news so often. While we've tried to keep up, the reality of encampments is that they are much, they are very much hubs for criminal activity, including such crimes as human trafficking and drug use and sales, meaning they have consequences beyond their immediate area and impact our neighborhoods and communities. Additionally, the camps often discharge pollutants into sensitive habitats and waste into our waterways and open spaces. They damage both public property and private property, including acts of arson, broken fences, and intrusions into residential property and into businesses. Persons sleeping in shop doorways and setting up camps behind stores and rummaging through their properties discourages business owners from wanting to come here and increases the cost of running a business, given the extra cost of security and damage repair. Finally, encampments blocking sidewalks, walkways, rights of way, and other means of accessing city parks, property, amenities, and facilities make that journey at times unsafe, and for those with disabilities, much more difficult. To give you a sense of what I'm talking about, here are the remnants of a homeless encampment within a few yards of the Escondido Creek. A good storm will wash these items down into the creek, polluting our treasured walkway, or waterway, pardon me. And at times, these encampments can be sophisticated with tables, couches, rugs, storage bins, and shelving. This encampment was out in the woods, also in the Harmony Grove area adjacent to the Escondido Creek. In the same area were other camping sites with gas stoves and open cooking areas, raising significant fire hazards, in addition to all the other trash and debris in the area. Interested in looking at solutions to these problems, city staff and city residents were all seeing, the City Council formed an ad hoc Subcommittee in March of 2023, and the mayor and councilmember Garcia were selected to serve on that Subcommittee. The mayor and councilmember Garcia held a series of meetings with various staff members, including your police chief and others on the front lines, to get an understanding of the problems they face, review possible solutions, and the Subcommittee sought their recommendations on ways to deal with these issues. Part of that effort also included looking at other local ordinances, programs, and approaches to see if there were any other effective laws being used to address the problems all municipalities are facing. Of particular interest were some recent laws passed by the cities of San Diego and Alcoa involving encampments and homeless service providers. As you will also recall, in setting the stage for this approach, the city wanted to take the Subcommittee crafted, and the City Council passed its homelessness policy statement in February of 2024. The city's policy on homelessness outlined the goals the City Council was seeking to achieve in tackling these very difficult issues. The policy made it clear that the council wanted to take a public safety-first approach, meaning, underlying the overall effort would be that the safety of all of our residents would be the paramount concern when developing laws, programs, and making accommodations for persons experiencing homelessness, and the safety of the unhoused is part of that goal. The policy in part made the following findings. It acknowledged the complexity of this problem and identified certain root causes, such as housing affordability, mental health concerns, and substance abuse disorder. It stated a desire to use compassionate but effective approaches when addressing the problems. It found that homelessness created pervasive and consistent level of criminal activity in the city, and there's evidence in support of that. It found that homelessness adversely impacts our local businesses and in turn suppresses economic activity, which is vital to a thriving city. And it found that homeless encampments were creating unsafe and unsanitary conditions throughout the city, and they had a clear negative environmental impact on our parks, creeks, waterways, plazas, and public buildings. The council recognized the city's obligations to maintain a clean and safe environment for the entire public, including the unhoused. The council further determined that there is a need for more local control and crafting solutions that work for this city, and it desired more clarity from the United States Supreme Court in cases such as grants passed, which I'll talk about in a minute, and declaring the rights of cities to enforce generally applicable state and local laws to regulate the impacts of homelessness. So, if I could turn to a brief overview of some of the case law that has stalled or even reversed local efforts to control the proliferation and cleanup of homeless encampments on public property. The case most prominently cited for the issue of restricting city encampment cleanups is Martin versus City of Boise, Idaho. This is a 2019 case out of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, and that is of some significance because the federal court system in the United States is divided up into appellate districts. The Ninth Circuit, which governs California, is by far the largest. It governs nine states, two territories, and its decisions coming out of that court apply to a significant portion of the country, but not all of it. That's the job for the United States Supreme Court. In Martin, the court found that criminal enforcement of public camping laws on unhoused persons was a violation of the Eighth Amendment to the United States Constitution, in those circumstances, that the individuals did not have access to shelter beds. That was, this was certainly a new application of the Eighth Amendment, and it was premised on a couple of cases from the 1960s, including Robinson and Powell, which held that a person cannot be subject to criminal prosecution for a status-based crime. In Robinson, it was being a drug addict; in Powell, it was being an alcoholic. By analogy, the court found that local camping prohibitions applied to persons who were homeless. applied to persons who were homeless was a criminal prosecution of their status as being homeless. Unfortunately, the United States Supreme Court did not grant petition for cert in that case, and it became the controlling authority over the entire Ninth Circuit, including California and Escondido, and led to all sorts of issues that we were seeing today. But it left open lots of practical questions about what local agencies could and could not do in terms of enforcing the laws that were already on their own books. For example, what kind of shelter had to be available for this enforcement? Could you use civil or administrative enforcement like fines? Are there any public places where you could enforce camping laws, even if there was no shelter available? There was a lot of confusion amongst the cities in what they could and could not do. And there was still homeless advocacy groups ready and willing to sue cities for perceived violations of this constitutional pronouncement in the Martin Court, which caused greater difficulty for cities in making decisions on what to do. In the wake of these questions, another Ninth Circuit Court panel issued an opinion in 2022, which reinforced the Eighth Amendment violation finding in Martin, and it granted a class wide injunction against enforcing the City of Grants Pass's public camping ordinance, even using an administrative civil citation process. Interestingly, the city in that case sought a full Ninth Circuit, what's called en banc review of the three judge panel. That request was denied, but in a fourteen to thirteen vote, meaning that there was significant interest in the Ninth Circuit in further review of the decision. And I think that was an impetus for what the United States Supreme Court eventually did. That case was appealed to the United States Supreme Court, and thankfully, they took the case up for review. There was a lot of interest in the case, and numerous groups submitted amicus briefs, including legislators, state and county civil city organizations like CalCities, business groups, law enforcement agencies and district attorney's offices, and several homeless advocacy groups filed their own briefs. One of the main issues addressed in the briefs was the lack of clarity to cities on how to continue to provide a safe environment and to regulate encampments while not running afoul of the law. The Supreme Court heard oral arguments in the case in April, and the United States Solicitor General's Office was allowed to participate in the argument and expressed concern. This is from the United States government, over the use of class injunctions in these kinds of cases. There were concessions made by both the United States as well as the plaintiffs in the case, the, the advocates for, for the homeless uh, population that were part of that class. And there were concessions as to, there were spaces where cities could regulate enforcement, regulate encampments and do enforcement. I think those are important concessions and they form part of the regulations and law that you're going to see tonight. The sport, the court is expected to issue its ruling any day now, uh, but the court has numerous cases in its queue and it may be a few days. So given the tenor of the briefing, the questions from the Supreme Court, and even the concessions of the parties, as I just mentioned, it is anticipated that the court may reverse or limit the reach of Martin and Grants Pass. Doing so will eliminate the uniqueness of the Ninth Circuit's decisions amongst other appellate districts and provide a uniform rule of the constitutionality of public encamping, encampment ordinances, and perhaps even other status based crime laws. Additionally, and most importantly for Escondido, the court can help answer some of the practical day to day operations and enforcement issues that city staff deal with in trying to eliminate the dangers and hazards created by these encampments. For example, can cities have public camping laws generally or only for specific identified locations? Are non criminal sanctions like civil and administrative fines a violation of the Eighth Amendment? If shelter beds remain a condition for enforcement, can a municipality use open air tents for that purpose? Can there be conditions on entry? For example, can you eliminate the having pets or having certain belongings in the, um, in the shelter, not being under the influence and those kinds of things? As well, in class action cases, if they're to be permitted, are the factual circumstances supposed to be uniform and even and the same, or can they be varied, which is difficult in a class case? In looking at our existing ordinances, understanding what we can do under Martin and Grants Pass and trying to satisfy all legal requirements as we understand them, we look through our existing ordinances as part of the subcommittee's work. These were drafted before Martin and do not refer to shelter bed availability, for example. Or some of the other restrictions that have come out of the newer encampment enforcement cases, like abatement notice procedures. So today, we have, we have some ordinances prohibiting sidewalk and building obstruction, public camping, waste on streets, unlawfulness of trash and, and flood control channels, uh, but they're inadequate. However, so our approach in this ordinance is to set a better record for why we need to take enforcement actions on public property due to the clear health and safety issues posed by these encampments and how we're going to be able to do that to meet current and anticipated laws. To do so as a proposed, we would remove the existing public camping prohibition in section seven dash eight, seventeen dash eight, which simply says essentially, no one can camp on public property. And replace that with a comprehensive ordinance that does several things, including it articulates the public policy foundation and need for greater enforcement. It updates definitions to be more specific and inclusive of the areas to be protected. It does reference shelter availability, acknowledging that may be a component of certain enforcement activity. And when shelter availability is not required under the law to allow, to then allow for enforcement. It better specifies the type of waterways that are protected, which helps address one specific area that has been a sustained problem, given its location and sensitive environmental conditions, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. It also identifies special locations for enforcement, including schools, as a function of needed public safety. And it makes violations of these provisions a misdemeanor subject to fines and jail time. Further, the new ordinance establishes a very specific protocol for encampment abatements, including a typical abatement process and an expedited one involving substantial and immediate public dangers. This was the condition of the Escondido Creek in the Harmony Grove area during a visit by the ad hoc subcommittee. And the protection of waterways is a critical component to what we're trying to accomplish here. And I think all would agree that the city has an obligation and a duty to do so. So one of the important purposes of adding new language to our existing ordinances is to be very specific as to the type of activities that are illegal in and around our waterways and the banks of those waterways. So there's a comprehensive definition of waterways, which is new. It includes the Escondido Creek, Kit Carson Creek, all its tributaries and headwaters, and any other drainage channel or improved or unimproved water course on public property. I'm trying to be as inclusive as possible to, to capture all of those potential problems. Under the, under this new ordinance, it is unlawful to build or erect structures when, within or along the waterways or fixing objects to trees or vegetation, moving boulders, rocks or reconfiguring the landscape, leaving shopping carts or other vehicles along the waterways, digging into the waterway banks and discharging garbage, refuse, human waste, uh, and other things along, uh, our waterways. These are of particular concern for a couple of reasons. One, with water comes brush, trees and vegetation, and these are desired places to set up encampments as they are less visible to routine inspection and observation. And with that vegetation and the use of open fires is greater concern over the start of a wildfire. Also, the city has an obligation to maintain clean, clean waterways, and these encampments are a source of pollutants, trash, waste impacting our water quality. The proposed code also provides essentially three tiers of unlawful, unlawful activity. First, the general prohibition on encampments on public property would be subject to a typical abatement notice. Second, specific, specific conditions making an encampment illegal and subject to cleanup and abatement on an expedited basis, which I'll discuss in a moment. Third, specific buffer areas around locations where there are either safety concerns or historic problems that may be subject to a different form of abatement depending on the circumstances. Again, these can be, these can be enforced regardless of shelter availability, and I believe that's true now even with Martin and Grants Pass in place. The proposed ordinance includes specific abatement procedures and protocols authorizing the city manager through city staff to clean up illegal encampments and store personal belongings. The procedures include giving twenty four hours minimum written notice for a typical abatement, perform the cleanup within the time noticed, and then during the cleanup and abatement for those individuals present, provide shelter and service information, allow reasonable time to remove belongings, document the cleanup process and remove belongings to the extent reasonably possible and safe, and thereafter making the stored belongings, uh, available for retrieval. There is also included an expedited abatement process where the circumstances require faster action, including where we receive notice of public health dangers from the county or a like government agency, or where the city manager makes findings that there is a significant risk of property damage or injury or death if the encampment is not summarily cleaned up. As part of our efforts to give reasonable, adequate and lawful notice when an encampment is going to be cleaned up, we have a specific notice that will be posted giving information and instructions on the city's cleanup and impoundment process. In the case of a typical abatement, this would be posted twenty four hours before cleanup. In an expedited abatement, the individual will have no more than three hours to remove themselves and their belongings from the location. Once the site has been cleaned up and the impound notice is posted in case someone was not present for the cleanup, and this gives that person information on how to retrieve their belongings. We're still working for, uh, on the website, uh, location for this, but so this is somewhat of a work in progress. I would like to address some caveats with the adoption of this ordinance that I think are important for the public to understand. Some may be more obvious than others, but are worth a mention. First, even if the Supreme Court reverses Grants Pass, the myriad of issues with the impacts of homelessness will not be resolved on the local level. As the city policy on homelessness acknowledged the problems have multiple root causes, and cleaning up encampments, while certainly necessary and important, is addressing only one. We will need to look for additional opportunities to address the other causes and effects of homelessness. Secondly, this ordinance only addresses the issue of encampments on public property and does not address the problems associated with cam, camping and damage to private property. Private property owners have laws that allow for their removal, for the removal of trespassers that do not include the need to demonstrate the availability of shelters. And the Ninth Circuit decisions do not restrict private property owners from taking lawful actions to control and maintain their properties. We will continue to see trespassing incidents until a more comprehensive solution could be found. Finally, as you can see with the level of notice and empowerment obligations, not to mention the potential increase in citations coming through the city attorney's offices for prosecution, the implementation of the ordinance will consume real public resources, but we believe that there's need for it. So in light of all this, the city, the subcommittee and staff recommend the adoption of ordinance number 2024 oh six. Additionally, as we learn more about the result in the Grants Pass case, we can examine additional steps that may be taken to effectively enforce local laws to protect our public spaces and environment, something that is, I think, all of our citizens want. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. We'll hold off on the questions for one minute and go ahead and move to public comments on the item.
Yes, we have a few public comments in person and twelve comments were submitted online. Our first speaker is Julie Crandall.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council Members. My name is Julie Crandall, and I am a part of the Civil Rights Practice Group at Disability Rights California. Disability Rights California is the largest disability organization in California and the nation. DRC advocates to make sure that unhoused people with disabilities can live in accessible, affordable housing in the community with the services they need to thrive. Today, on behalf of DRC, we urge you to oppose the adoption of the City of Escondido's proposed ordinance number 2024 dash oh six and the enactment of the proposed municipal code seventeen dash eighty, eight point one through seventeen dash eight point seven. We believe this proposed ordinance will result in criminalization of unhoused individuals in Escondido for simply not having a home and nowhere else to go. We seek to engage with the city regarding the reasons the proposed ordinance discriminates against unhoused persons with disabilities and to provide solutions to the city's homelessness crisis. DRC has several recommendations, and may as follows. Ensure that empirical data and research used to support the policy is not outdated or inconclusive. Collaborate and listen to service providers who are on the ground. Conduct outreach to individuals who are currently unhoused in Escondido. Actively engage with service providers and outreach, outreach workers who provide trauma informed care through Escondido's social services. Financially support organizations dedicated to eliminating homelessness in Escondido. Ensure the city's policies and procedures encourage and do not constrain the development of high quality, accessible, affordable housing. Acknowledge how municipal policies contribute to the homelessness crisis and work to fix policies and ordinances. We'd like to provide an overview of the problems with Escondido's homelessness policies and recommend the following solutions. Unhoused individuals of marginalized groups, including those with disabilities, are disproportionately affected. Disabled people's health and welfare are put in jeopardy. Empirical data and evidence based research is not used, resulting in the ineffective public safety policies. No additional resources or housing is provided for unhoused individuals. Overcriminalization and segregation of people with disability results, and overcriminalization of unhoused status is costly and economically inefficient for the city. We ask the city to equally prioritize the needs of both its privileged citizens and its vulnerable citizens. Our comments reflect shared desire to provide a safe city of choice for everyone that lives in Escondido. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Maria Wallace.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members. My name is Maria Wallace, and as a resident of this city, I have been watching the rise of homelessness. According to the Voice of San Diego, last year, North County's third largest homeless population was 1,436, and Escondido had the highest unsheltered homeless population. Mayor White, during an interview with KPBS in 2022, you say that you have lived experience with substance abuse and homelessness. You also say you have gathered direct, direct people on where they need to go to get help, but we also have to be willing to provide more of that help. So my question is, what happened? Now, Councilmember Joe Garcia and you, Mayor, drafted a new policy that supports public safety first approach toward homelessness. And Mr. Garcia said that policy tries to balance compassion and enforcement to deal with the hotspots. Well, most of those hotspots are in my district, okay? During one of those interviews, it was also stated that the one size fits all approach of housing first is ineffective and unsustainable. And now, um, and how do you guys know if you have not done it? You have not done the full program. So how's first work in Houston? It can work here first also. Homelessness should not be managed by the police because poverty is not a crime. So I have some papers for you. Maybe I can get some copies if you really would like to read about Houston and San Diego, and we can see the approaches, the difference. The same program, how it worked in Houston didn't work in San Diego, but.
If it's easier, you can email it to us.
Yeah, but I know that it's not one solution. It's not gonna be. There is many, many things in this community. We need, uh, organizations. But, you know, we can be just taking it, changing it around to different people, you know? It's, this is a very serious, serious thing, you know? My community is just, I talk to people all the time, you know? Not everybody's a drug addict. Not everybody, you know, their families. So I invite you guys to go and walk around District One. Just walk. Talk to people, okay? It makes a difference. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bryant Rumba.
I thought she brought her papers with her. Okay. So, uh, you know, homelessness, uh, here we go. This is what I can say is the last couple of years as I've been, you know, going to these meetings uh, at the Board of County Supervisors, it's, it's, uh, on the agenda every time. Uh, it's just another example of people really, you know, expecting government to kind of, let's just say, you know, solve problems. And what I've noticed is no matter how many times, uh, how much money is thrown at it, uh, it, it, it only seems to get worse. And I'm not blaming government for that. And I'm not blaming government for that, okay? I understand you guys are in a tough position. You know, us as a society, we're, we're, we do kind of, let's just, if we were honest with ourselves, it's easy for us to be in the "not in my neighborhood, not in my backyard" type approach, okay? When I was looking at those videos or those pictures, you know, seeing some of those encampments, I mean, the ones that actually looked like people were, you know, trying to live an orderly life, I mean, there's, there's quite possibly that those people are maybe newly homeless, you know? Quite possibly, they, you know, lost their, maybe the Consumer Price Index affected them, okay? Maybe the instability of our financial system affected them. You know, what I, what I can say is that everything in this world, as I've learned, is really relative. And you know, for me, I did, you know, kind of, you know, kind of become an observer of society in 2008 as I started really kind of diving in and seeking truth. And you know, I've definitely know that what I've noticed, you know, with regarding people, their own little cube, as long as their own little cube is not affected, maybe they out of sight, out of mind, like I said. You know, what I can say about your, you know, the Supreme Court is, you know, originally the purview of the Supreme Court was ironically to handle disagreements between the states of the Union. And our society, as we really have become so unengaged, this happened way before our lives, you know, we, we, we believe that this Supreme Court determines constitutionality. Now, we were told, we were given very specific instructions, one of them was certainly, you know, to be your brother's keeper. On this, when this country was founded, this opportunity, you know, remaining virtuous was, was gonna be critical to whether we would, we would be able to pull it off. Because really, the opportunity to be a citizen of a, of a, of a nation, in this case, a Union, well, really, it was both, it only occurred twice in history prior to this. You know, it is possible that they kind of knew that we were gonna drop the ball and have somebody else, you know, handle business for us. We're always gonna have people that are productive and people that are slackers or wanna, you know, whatever, not, not be productive. As, as our country's gone in my lifetime from the largest creditor nation to the largest debtor nation, I mean, these are things, we are reaping the harvest of the example that we've done to ourselves, our families, and the rest of the world. And it's coming through the border every day. I have nothing against illegal immigration, but this is an example, I mean, I have nothing against immigrants, that's, you have to say that, otherwise, people are gonna say you're a racist or anti-Semite or something. Anyhow, thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
No further public on the side.
Okay, that being said, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I hate to do this to everybody, but we're gonna take a three-minute break. You come to realize that I think most people, whether they're for it or against it, are under this, under the assumption that this is a blanket encampment ban on any piece of public land in Escondido, and as soon as somebody pitches a tent anywhere, they are immediately going to get a ticket. So break it down exactly how, how that would work if this were to go into effect, and then I know it specifically states what enforcement is possible without a shelter. But yeah, if you could sort of go through that first.
As you saw, there are some specific areas, there are buffer zones, for example. I'm gonna kind of go backwards from the slide that had that information on it, if you'd just give me one moment. Then you have these very specific areas where the manager is making decisions with respect to the, the substantial threat of risk and harm to people. Those will have immediate abatements or three-hour abatements. And then you have a general unlawful encampment on public property, including streets. So how it would work is if we come upon an encampment, I think generally speaking, and I have an officer, I have Captain Banks here, I mean, he can speak to from on the street.
Lieutenant?
Wait, Lieutenant, can I say Captain? I'm sorry.
Oh, it is Captain, oh, okay. I forgot, that was my bad.
So, yeah, I'm just inviting him up as well as, as they deal with it on the streets. But primarily, you come upon an encampment that would be in violation of the ordinance, I think the typical approach would be, you need to move. There would be a warning, an immediate warning, you can't be here. With somebody who, if there's nobody at the encampment, so if somebody's there, you would tell them to move. They don't move, they're in violation of the ordinance, you can cite them, and then you can do the abatement process.
I'm assuming that's move in the same 24-hour period?
Yes.
Even with a verbal warning?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I mean, but you can prompt them, you could say, what you're doing is illegal, you need to move, and I think you might have some level of compliance with that. But for those, those encampments, and you saw the pictures, and you and I were there in, in, in the jungle when we saw that, the pictures I put up here, there was nobody there. And so in those circumstances, you'd be posting notice within 24 hours, you're telling these people that this area's gonna get cleaned out, and personal belongings that are identifiable would be retrievable, notice would be posted after that. So depends on if they're there or they're not. If they're there, you would ask them to move along because they're in violation of the code. Police officers have a fair amount of discretion in either citing somebody immediately or just saying, look, you need to move along, and you have a, you have a, you're in violation of the code. I don't know if that answers your question most, but I think
Good enough.
There's a certain level of discretion with the officers. The intent is to move the encampment, not necessarily to arrest people. That is part of the code, but really, it's, it's a compliance-based effort.
Now, touching on something you just said, for a substantial health and safety risk, what is a substantial health and safety risk? Because I think that's relative based on the perception of the individual responding. So what reaches the level of substantial health and safety risk?
The law is full of reasonableness and substantiality. I think it would give any reasonable officer or observer the belief that there could be some greater harm associated with that action. Let me give you an example, an open fire. That, that's substantial risk. If you see immediately pollutants coming out of a camp, flushing into the waterway, that's immediate, that's a significant and substantial harm. So toxins, fires, anything that's gonna be out, that could emanate from or impact other habitats, neighborhoods, and those kinds of things. So I think it's heightened, it's not just anything, it's gotta be something substantial.
Okay, kind of on a different topic here, I know without exception, 500 feet from a school, a shelter, the open space, but the transit hub one, I found a little bit curious. So from my understanding, NCTD contracts with the sheriffs, so would we still be responsible for the removal of an encampment on their property?
Not, we would not typically do that, correct? We don't, but within 500 feet of that area.
Of the surrounding area.
So if you're having encampments being placed around them, that would be within our jurisdiction.
Okay, moving on, so I noticed in the storage, stuff is stored for, it says, a minimum of 60 days. Somebody comes to whoever would be over that and says, it's been 60 days, but I can come back in a week or two, I've found shelter, or whatever, I found a new place to store my stuff. Would they be granted that additional time?
I'm looking back at our Director of Public Works, Joe Galart, because his teams are the ones on the front lines of that. Here's, if I could just give you my reaction to that?
Sure.
I think our desire would be to allow people to retrieve their items if there was identifiable items that they needed, and there was reasonable cause to believe that they were gonna come back and retrieve them within the timeframe. But there has to be some level of a cutoff because storage and the maintenance of that is an expensive process, and it's a time-consuming process for our staff. So having somebody come back every week, saying, well, I'm gonna come back next week, I'm gonna come back next week, there has to be a certain moment in time where you're gonna call it.
Understood. Since you're there, can you talk a little bit about storage and public works and how that works?
Yes, Mayor, I'm your Director of Public Works, Joe Galart. Our current system works very efficiently, so we do pick up abandoned property and we do store it. We bag it and tag it and take pictures of it. People will come up and, you know, to the Public Works yard, and our Public Works admin has pictures of the stuff that we have, have, have taken in, and if they can identify it, we give those back to them. We keep them for a certain period of time, and in some instances, we have kept it longer to work with some of the people. If they say, hey, you know, I need, you know, another week or two, we'll work within those parameters. But if they don't come within that week or two, then we will dispose of the property.
Perfect, thank you. That actually concludes my questions for the moment. Before I open it up to questions to the other council members, I would actually move to approve the item as is and ask for a second before we go to questions. Second, thank you. And I'll open it up to my colleagues. Go ahead.
I'd like to start off, so thank you so much for all the work, our staff, Subcommittee. I mean, this is tremendous work, and, and it's, it's very difficult to do, given the severity, the gravity of what we're looking at. I made some notes, so the first thing is, you know, we received a lot of emails from people, a lot of hateful, lots of hate, that was masked in compassion, or masked as compassionate. The current state of what we have right now, it's cruel, it's not compassion. I've said this before here, compassion without order is chaos, and order without compassion is tyranny. And I think that the, what we have here really does a good job of walking that fine line, so I commend you guys, I think it's, it's great work. But it's not compassion, letting people do what they will, it's degeneracy, it's irresponsible, it's chaotic, and we've all seen it. I mean, we've seen, I've talked to people, I've talked to business owners, I've talked to families. One of the things that really, it breaks, breaks my heart is when people, I talk to families and they say, I can't take my kids to the park. As, as a new father, I, it breaks my heart to hear that. And compassion, though, is knowing what is right, and, and knowing that someone's well-being is the most important, and sometimes people don't know what is, is best for their well-being. So allowing people to be high, sleep in rad and cockroach-infested filth, to sleep in the heat or cold is just awful, and I can't, I can't allow it anymore. I have to do what is right for the community. This has been asked from our, my constituents, from people all over the city for a really long time, for, for years now. And so I think, you know, we're making incremental steps, but that we're making the right steps. And it doesn't matter if, you know, the people that talk to me, I have liberal friends, conservative friends, people in the middle, people are apolitical. I think everyone, 90% of people agree, this is, this isn't right. So I just really, that's, those are my comments, I just really wanted to say thank you for the work that you guys did. It's very difficult work, and we're making incremental steps in the right direction. So thank you so much.
Well, I would, you know, I appreciate the effort to address this issue. It's definitely an issue that I hear about. My, my concern is, you know, I, I appreciate, I got it a little bit, you know, in advance of the, the public agenda, but I would say it still seems like it's another proposal that doesn't include stakeholder input from service providers. So I'm gonna ask and not assume if any, if, if you reached out to any service providers, any stakeholders in the development of the ordinance, and if so, if you could share who and how you came to develop it.
Some stakeholders have seen it, and service providers, I mean, and over the last year, I've talked to probably 1,000 stakeholders in the community.
So regarding the ordinance, was there any input from stake, from service providers that helped draft the ordinance? That's my question.
I don't know about directly from service providers, but like I said, I've had conversations, and that helped guide my thoughts.
So, yeah, it's really, it's difficult for me to, to approve something that I believe does require more input. I wanna make decisions on policy based on data and best practices, and I did get communications from different service providers, you know, stating that they would like to be involved. I know that was a, the similar sentiment that I heard with the public safety policy statement that we did, so I feel like we haven't done that. I also recall the ad hoc committee, at some point, there was, Mayor, you had mentioned that there would be an opportunity for, for collaboration with stakeholders and, and service providers, and I'm wondering if that's something that's gonna happen soon, because from what I understand, the current committee right now is just limited to council members and no public is, is part of those meetings, is that correct?
The Subcommittee will be open to the public when the time is right.
Okay, do you have an idea of when that will be?
When the time is right?
Okay, so no date? So see, for me, it's, it's really important because we tell the public that we're going to involve them, that we're gonna have service providers get involved, it's something that continues to come up. It's been over a year, and I don't, I don't want to support a policy that, hold on, I'm still, I'm still, it's still my turn to talk. I don't wanna support, I don't feel comfortable supporting a policy when we said we were gonna do something, and it's been a significant amount of time. And I wanna make sure that what I'm voting on is, like I said, includes experts that work with, with these populations, because I don't work with the populations, you know? And I wanna make sure that I'm not further creating harm and trauma for people. I, at the, at the same time, I'm not, I don't want to look the other way and pretend there's no problem and not do anything. I would, I'm definitely interested in taking action and exploring possibilities, but for me to feel good about making an informed decision, I definitely want stakeholders, service providers, professionals who work with unhoused folks, because I know there's a myriad of issues and, and things to look out for. Another thing that was mentioned is discretion, and so can, I know that you shared a little bit of what the process would look like, so who exactly, I'm assuming it's Public Works, but maybe you can just give more specifics? Who specifically will be, like, what triggers an encampment saying, you know, we're, we are gonna go to this encampment and we're gonna provide a notice? Is there, is it a complaint that triggers that? What's the process for triggering action on an encampment? Is there gonna be staff or officers driving around identifying encampments before action is taken? So let's start there, on how, you know, identifying which one?
That's currently what we do, is we get, it can be complaint-driven, observational. We, we look for calls for service, that's actually the foundation of the, the cops team, looking for those things. So you, you've, you've identified, it can be routine patrol, it can be public input, it can be, all of those elements is when we can become aware and, and start to, to look at a particular case to take action. But yes, we have multiple ways that that comes in front of our team.
Okay, got it. And then who would be responding to the, you know, to the encampments? Who's the first, the first point of contact?
So the first point of contact is going to be the police department, that's how we work typically, through our cops team will be that, that'll be the typical encounter. It could be an individual officer, depending on where the cops teams is deployed. As we moved into the future, with the approval of the additional cops team, they will be much more involved on a day-to-day pace basis. A lot of those complaints do come in through our Public Works Department, they're first routed to the cops team before the Public Works team gets engaged in that process.
Okay, thank you for walking me through that and explaining that. And then as far as the items, and I've always heard that we have storage units, I've never seen the storage units. How many, at this moment, do we have a ballpark idea of how many storage units we have or that have items in there? That's one question. And then do the majority of people collect their items, or do you find that majority of the things get destroyed because they don't get picked up?
So once again, I'm Joe Galart. So we have two different types of storage facilities. One of them is for abandoned property or property that we find, and the other one is safekeeping for property that we deprive of people, meaning that person gets arrested by PD for some sort of violation. We have two C containers, one for just normal storage and one for safekeeping. I don't know how much stuff we have in there right now at this point in time, I know we have stuff in both of them, and predominantly for safekeeping, the majority of those people come back and, and pick up their belongings, but a lot of in our other container, I don't know what that percentage is, I know that some come pick it up and some do not.
Okay, what kind of containers did you say they were?
They're shipping containers, C containers.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what that was. And the ones that, the ones that do come back, the majority, which, which category is that in? Is that the things you find are the ones that you get from people who are arrested?
Which one has a higher percentage?
Of people that, that come back for their items? People that come back for their items.
I don't have that information right offhand. I know that, I don't have that exact information. I would say the safekeeping, we probably have a higher percentage, but I don't have this specific information.
Okay, got it. Thank you for that. And let me see what else I have here. And then, if someone was to want to retrieve their items, where do they go? Is there like a certain window of office hours? Like, who do they talk to? And then what is required of them to retrieve their items?
So once again, there's two different types of criteria, the safekeeping. When they are arrested, they are given a piece of paper, and they would bring that piece of paper to the public works yard. And then we would basically give their belongings back. Now, if it is something that we find on the street, that we pick up as abandoned, and it is what we would consider reasonable property that we store, then somebody would have to come up to the public works yard, they would have to identify what that property was. Public Works admin, so our debris crew takes pictures of all the debris that we pick up. We put that in City Works. Public Works admin has access to City Works, and they can look through all the pictures that we have stored. If that matches the description of the person that is asking for that information, then we would give them back their belongings.
Okay. So you pretty much, there's no like, you probably don't know who it belongs to, so it's just identifying what it is, and you have a list or a database that you can look up an item and find it?
We do, yes. We take pictures of it.
But do you have like a database or something?
We don't, well, we store everything in City Works in a City Works work order.
Got it. Are you going to add something?
In addition, one of the things that is in the new ordinance is this posting requirement, which will now, somebody will see a posted sign, and they can now understand where they would go to collect their material.
Okay, thank you. And then, can we go back to the slide that talks about the current ordinance that we have, the municipal code, I believe? That you're wanting to update? It has numbers on it. There you go. Thank you. Okay, so these are existing ordinances, and you're saying we would provide more detail and be more specific with them. Is that correct, City Attorney?
Exactly. So seventeen point eight, seventeen dash eight is the existing encampment ordinance, so to speak, and it's very brief. It doesn't really have a lot of information in it. So what we've done is, now we've had this broader grouping of provisions that includes waterways, more specific information with respect to waterways. And again, I'll emphasize that the recitals and the foundation for this ordinance elicits and describes the underlying health and safety issues that I don't think were a part of these. And so that provides the police powers function that gives you the authority to engage in the encampment regulations. So collectively, it's a much broader, more specific, inclusive, and none of these have anything to do, none of the provisions that you see here have any of these notice, the abatement notice and cleanup information, so that's a new thing.
Okay, thank you. And like I said, I think, you know, I think for me, because this is like the first, you know, reading of it, and I really would love, I would love for policy to include input from all the council members. And that's not been what has happened lately. It's like, you know, it's as presented, adopt it, and I think that, you know, it would be really great if it could be collaborative policymaking, where all council members' input is really considered, and we try to meet in the middle in some way. That would, I would love to see that. Because I do agree that, you know, I want to protect our watersheds and waterways. I want people to feel safe walking down the street. And I think, you know, if you're obstructing, for example, the sidewalk and somebody can't get by in a wheelchair or can't walk by, then, you know, that should be cleaned up. We should not block people's access to public right of way. And I thought we were doing that, so so that, I agree that we shouldn't allow that. We shouldn't allow unlawful activity like drug dealing, parking sideways in a parking lot where there's, you know, the opposite direction of a parking lot. So, I mean, there needs to be accountability, and I agree with that, but for me, I'm not going to support this as written. I welcome the opportunity to revisit an ordinance. I know in the past, before, we had, we changed the rules to require two council members to submit an item on the agenda. One of the things that I had lifted up was a safe parking lot, and I don't know if the committee has taken that on or not, but for me, it would really feel good to know that the committee was open to the public and that we could really have a robust discussion that would ask, hey, what's the input of the council members? Let's talk about that. Let's try to incorporate some of that in an ordinance, instead of like, here's the ordinance that two people produced. No disrespect to the people who did it, but it's two people that have brought the proposal forward, and I would like to also have a say. I would like to also be able to influence that. So, and I don't see really that that's an opportunity or very welcomed in the policymaking around homelessness for a city. Those are my comments for now.
Okay, I have a couple more questions, but you mentioned earlier, Councilwoman, that you got this in advance, and I'm just curious how far in advance you received this?
Before the posting of the agenda, so not too far in advance.
Okay, so about a week. And you're not prepared to offer a single amendment? So, I find that interesting. You had a week to at least look at it and offer some sort of critique, but your only critique, hold on, it's still my turn, and I'm going to answer my questions after this, but your only critique seems to be that you wanted to participate. You did get more time to participate, and you're not prepared to offer a single amendment to this. And the thing is, I don't think most people realize, you know, it's Sandag, it's the same thing. When a new policy comes up, you have the agendas posted, you have a couple of days to go through it, offer any amendments. Sometimes you win those battles. In my case, on Sandag, unfortunately, you lose most of them. It's just the way that it is. But if you're not prepared to offer even a single amendment tonight, there's no way I'm going to kick this can down the road even further. I think there's too many people in the community who are counting on this. But with that being said, I forgot to ask, what effect does this have on parking lots? And I was asked that question by some people who are currently struggling with Lot Two specifically, so does this have any effect at all on the way that we respond to parking lots?
If it's a public parking lot, Parking Lot Two is a public parking lot, it would be the same thing. So it's public property, encampments on public property.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does and it doesn't, because, and I guess it does, because in a sense, I think the issue with Lot Two is we don't have available shelter space, so a lot of the times, there's not much we can do about it. So the way that the law sits right now, not much is going to change in that instance, other than we'll put up the posting, and after 24 hours, we can issue a citation. But they could just leave and come back, essentially.
And if I could interject on Lot Two.
Please do.
We are pursuing a way to manage it, because some of that is also taking that asset for the businesses offline. So we're in active conversations with the DBA about management of that lot, so that it is not open overnight. One of the concerns, though, is that them having the ability to adjust to their business clientele. So it does, as the City Attorney stated, it does impact that space. It makes things a lot clearer on the enforcement side.
Okay.
But I want to assure council that we're in active conversations. If those conversations do not result in a positive outcome, we may, the city manager may close Lot Two. So I'm just, I'm putting it out there that, but I have, I'm optimistic that we can get somewhere in that conversation about the management, so that it is open as the business is needed. So we're on a good conversation on that.
With the signs that are being posted, that brought up another question in my head. So right now, if an encampment is going to get cleaned up and nobody's there, people don't know where to find their stuff? Or they do?
Well, they do, because word of mouth. I mean, we've been storing since 2018, so word of mouth on the street, they know where to get their stuff at the public works yard.
And the sign, what kind of sign are we talking about? If there is an abandoned encampment, what does this sign look like? What's it made of?
So I believe the City Attorney showed you kind of a representation of those signs.
And is it paper?
Would be, but we can encase it in some kind of
Okay.
plastic sleeve, so it doesn't get wet, or, we want it readable, we want it obvious. We'll do it in English and Spanish. We can have it on both sides.
Okay.
So the import of it was, is to make sure that people know what's happening, what their obligations are, what, it gives them an opportunity, a reasonable opportunity to gather the materials and their stuff, and how to get it back.
Okay.
And we're not relying on the street word. We're actually notifying folks.
That's the part that I wanted to highlight some of this, about, you know, what's going on now and what actually gets improved through this process. Are we going to be putting out permanent signs in front of schools in some places or near the transit center? In those areas where there are no exceptions for shelter space, will permanent signs be posted?
I think that would be a good idea to do, and part of that is reference in the ordinance with respect to when it's signed, then you can do enforcement, and I think you ought to have pre-signing. We could talk about those locations that we want to prioritize first and then work into the.
Is that conversation something that needs to happen here and now or at a future date?
No.
Okay.
We will be, we will be moving, with the adoption of the ordinance, we will be moving through that process. One of those things would be, we need to get in dialogue with the schools about locations, so on and so forth.
Okay.
And the transit center, too. So some of these things need to be posted on their property. So we might be manufacturing the signs, and they would likely be telling us where some of the placement issues would be.
And Mayor, can I address real quickly?
Please.
Mike, I'm sorry. The question about the retrieval, how often that's happening, and the word of mouth that you heard. My office sees all of the claims that come into the city for damages associated with all sorts of things, auto accidents, whatever that might be. I can't remember a claim that I've seen for somebody claiming that we have not been able, that they have not been able to recover their materials, that we lost it, we threw it away improperly. If it's happened, it's an incredibly rare thing. So while word of mouth might seem to be working, what we're trying to do here is be even more open, transparent, and informational for these folks.
Understood.
Sorry, Mike.
Councilmember Roscoe?
It's okay. I appreciate it. I appreciate the question that Councilmember Martinez asked in regards to seventeen dash eight. Just wanted to verify that none of the other seventeen dashes are being changed other than seventeen dash eight, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. So just in hearing all this and going on past experience, having lived here for sixty some odd years, seeing what's been going on, escondido my experience, the experience that others have shared, the experiences that we all see and read about on an ongoing basis, in social media, through people contacting us, emails, text messages, phone calls, engagements, meetings, where we all, on an ongoing basis, are constantly having conversations about what's going on, people's thoughts, people's opinions, the input. I think there has been so much input from the community already. I don't see how trying to create a more formalized opportunity for people to express themselves is going to change any of the data and information that's already been received, the myriad of information that we've already received. So anyway, in listening to all this, I just was writing down different thoughts that came to mind. And those thoughts are prudent in regards to this ordinance, prudent, compassionate, essential, all-inclusive, non-discriminatory, humane, timely, tested, proven, as the City of San Diego has proven, that this is a viable ordinance, and it does work, and has worked for them. It's been well-studied, it's been patiently weighed, carefully crafted, it's fair, it's helpful, safety and public health-oriented. Discretion is emphasized for our police officers, and it's best practices, again, as other cities have demonstrated that this is best practice as far as protecting our city, our citizens, and the majority of the individuals within our city. It is best practice. I've recently had the opportunity to do police ride-alongs, as well as police briefings, and the impact of some of these encampments and the restrictions and handicaps that we are having, not only on the legal side, but on the policing side of things, is so extreme. It's almost unbelievable what these men and women have to go through on a daily basis with these calls and the inability to to explain to the public, to businesses, to individuals, to families, why it is that they are so limited in what can and cannot be done to help protect those families, those neighborhoods, those businesses, those enterprises, whatever it may be. Very high percentage of those affected with this particular ordinance are long-term, experienced, sophisticated, and professional homeless, and I don't know how else to say it. They have declined most assistance, and they continue to choose the encampment lifestyle, which doesn't mean that we need to accept that just because someone has made that option. The City Attorney has pointed out that conditions and disabilities do not allow or permit someone to break the law just because of conditions or disabilities. In regards to stakeholders, as I said earlier, we are all stakeholders in this. Every single one of us are stakeholders. It's not just certain organizations who are basically enterprises with the design to help those less fortunate or homeless. Some of those providers have ulterior motives. Some of those motives are for enabling and to allow the status quo to continue. And we've already seen that throwing billions of dollars to the homeless problem, getting more and more grants, doing more and more efforts that are all aimed at enabling and allowing people to do whatever they want to do is not solving the problem, it's creating more of a problem, it's creating more homelessness, and it's creating more restrictions in our ability to provide for safety and good public health. I believe that our police and our staff are experts, and they are experienced, and have worked with these issues for many, many years. And they're the ones that have provided a lot of input and a lot of information in regards to what the issues are as this subcommittee has formulated and helped to formulate these provisions that have been crafted by City Attorney. I think there are those entities out there that are philosophically opposed to what we may want to be doing here, and that's their right, that's their privilege, they can do that. But again, I'm not in favor of perpetuating the status quo. I'm in favor of change and doing anything that we can to make our city a better city. And I personally, I've been dumbfounded by some of the emails that have come in, especially from other organizations who theoretically want to help the homeless. And from my perspective, opposition is nonsensical in this particular case, and I'm in complete favor of this ordinance as currently presented and will be voting for it.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. So I have just a few things. A lot of questions have been answered, a lot of information has gone. One of the things that I'd like to mention is that this policy, as it's being presented, doesn't exclude any discussion about shelters or about safe parking or anything like that. This is not excluding anything like that. It wasn't designed to do that, and it doesn't do that. So those are conversations that are going to happen. In regard to, about services, I have, I would believe I'm probably the council member that has done the most ride-alongs with the police. Over seventeen years of being a chaplain with the police department, listening to the conversations of our officers with the unhoused population. I have gone on regular ride-alongs with stakeholders here in this community, and I community, and I always hear an offer for services. Would you like this? Would you like that? We can help you to do this. And in most of the cases, there have been a few that have said, yes, I would, and they have received the information necessary to be able to do, to receive the resources that they're seeking. But in most of the conversations, those that don't want any of the services. So, and once again, this policy does not exclude anyone from offering the services. On the contrary, well, not specifically the policy, but I did ask the chief of police in other moments that he's been here to, as he's presented, if this was something that our officers did on a regular basis, offering services. I asked him, knowing what the answer was, and the answer was yes. Why? Because of the hundreds of ride-alongs that I've done, and I've actually experienced with them. Is this a situation that is not only in Escondido, San Diego, and in an entire state and an entire country? It is. Is it inhumane? I'd say, yeah, it is. To the point where our state has passed a bipartisan legislation, SB 1011, compassionately to clear encampments, a bipartisan approach and support passed, and it's sitting on the governor's desk for him to sign it if he so chooses to do so. Do I believe that this is, as best as we can at the moment, have a balance between enforcement and compassion? Yes. I sat there, and I worked on it, and I tried, and I thought about it. Have I spoken with stakeholders? Yes. Have I spoken to the homeless? Absolutely. Do I hang around the parks and talk to them? Yes, I do. Just because you don't see me doing that doesn't mean that I don't do that. I don't go advertising that I do that. I don't go take pictures of myself and posting that. But do I do it? Absolutely. And I've had some very interesting conversations. Have I gone out in the middle of the night and done counts? I have absolutely done that. Has it changed my thinking? Yes, it has. Why? Because it was at that point that I began to find families. I've begun to find women that have lost their children because of addiction and are trying to work their way back. And it did change my thinking. Unfortunately, when we're driving around town in our normal driving from one place to another, the unhoused population that we see tend to be very visible, and they almost seem like at times they want to make sure that we notice them. I've had reports from different business owners that there are unhoused population or members that are unhoused that drive by on bicycles, and because these business owners are complaining, I will drive by and go like this. Now, if you were a business owner, how would you feel about it? I think any reasonable person would believe that. They're probably being threatened. So, there's a lot of that that is happening. Are we trying to criminalize? I'm not. Absolutely not. But I am trying to find something that we can do in the absence of a real policy to begin, listen, to begin to deal with this. And I'm available. I would appreciate meeting with anyone that would want to meet with me, and listen to what you have to say. But most people just will make statements and not reach out to have a productive discussion. Regarding discussion for us on the dais, our current system is the way that we're doing it, through subcommittees, and because of the Brown Act, we're limited to how information discussion is happened. This is the moment. It's brought here, and we all have an opportunity to be able to share and to be able to bring amendments forth and say, can we change this? Can we change that? This is the moment to do that, not only for those of us that sit here, but also for the community come up and be able to offer ideas that they think that would be productive. At least I believe that's the way it should be. Is it perfect? No, it's not. Did I say the same thing about the last policy? Yes. Are there more work to be done? Yes, there is more work to be done, and we're going to continue working to help make our city better. I am curious, we had a testimony or someone representing the Disability Rights California to speak, and I just find it interesting that District Four was ignored from the letter that we got. I don't know if they don't have any homelessness issues there or...
No, because they're in agreement with District Four's position on this.
That must be it then. Okay, so I just found that interesting, that they were not included in that. For the most part, I would say that as imperfect as it is, and I'm repeating myself, but it's true, as imperfect as it is, we're starting to make some strides. We're trying to create a way in Escondido to improve our city for all our residents. And remember, this policy does not exclude some of the things that we've been listening tonight. So, that would, more or less, will conclude my comments for this.
Okay. With that being said, I'll call the question. We have a motion and second. Please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved for one. Martinez, no.
Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to item twelve, ratification of local emergency proclamation and approve emergency repairs of the trunk sewer main pipeline. Sounds expensive.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor.
And Councilmembers. My name's Angela Morrow. I'm your Director of Utilities. Thank you. I would like to introduce Stephanie Roman. She's a Principal Engineer in the Utilities Department. Today, she will be presenting the ratification of local emergency proclamation and emergency repair of the Escondido trunk sewer.
Thank you, Angela, and good evening. The trunk sewer mains are an integral and critical part of the city's wastewater system. The original trunk mains were constructed in the 1950s and carry raw sewage from the city to the Hale Avenue Resource Recovery Facility, also known as the Harf. Over the past several years, the city has been replacing the aging trunk sewer mains through a series of CIP and emergency projects. Last week, while utility staff were performing routine closed-circuit television inspections of the sewer system, multiple failed and severely deteriorated sections of twenty-one-inch trunk sewer main were identified. In some areas, the top of the sewer main has collapsed, leaving large voids of soil above. Although wastewater continues to flow through the trunk sewer pipeline, staff believes there is imminent danger of a catastrophic failure which could lead to sinkholes, raw sewage spills, and possible damage to a parallel large diameter potable water transmission main. The yellow line on this figure shows the Escondido Creek. The red line shows the trunk sewer main that needs to be urgently replaced in order to avoid a catastrophic failure and protect public safety. This trunk sewer main parallels the Escondido Creek from Date Street to North Hickory, traverses a short section of North Hickory Street, then continues in East Pennsylvania Avenue from North Hickory Street to North Broadway. Since June 17th, many tasks have been completed. A portion of the bike path between North Fig and North Date has been closed, detouring public to the north side of the Escondido Creek. Trench plates have been placed in high-traffic areas over the damaged trunk sewer in order to redistribute the weight of vehicles, thereby reducing the risk of sinkholes and raw sewage spills. In order to act quickly and to avoid catastrophic failure, a local emergency was proclaimed by the city manager, serving as the Director of Emergency Services. This enabled staff to begin working directly with a contractor to address the necessary emergency repairs to the failing trunk line. Utility staff continue to inspect adjacent portions of the already compromised main and continue to analyze the inspection video to finalize a comprehensive scope of work. Once inspection and analysis are complete, staff will work with a contractor to obtain a not-to-exceed-cost and estimated schedule to complete the emergency repairs. Updates will be provided to City Council at future council meetings. Anticipated construction for the emergency repairs include replacement of approximately four thousand one hundred linear feet of existing trunk pipeline. The trunk sewer ranges in depth from four feet to approximately fifteen feet. The contractor will use an open trench construction method in conjunction with an above-grade bypass system. Also included in the scope of work are the replacement of fourteen sewer manholes and the reconnection of existing sewer laterals. The majority of the proposed construction is within the bike path along the south side of Escondido Creek and within existing paved roadways. Utility staff are working closely with other city departments to coordinate the work so that the repairs along the bike path are consistent with the Escondido Creek Trail Project. At this time, staff requests that council adopt Resolution Number 2024-86, ratifying Proclamation Number 2024-02 by the Director of Emergency Services, and declaring that pursuant to the California Contract Code and Escondido Municipal Code, the City Council affirms that it was appropriate for city staff to forego competitive bidding procedures and work with a contractor for the emergency repairs to the failing trunk sewer. This concludes staff presentation.
Any public comments on this item? None. Council, have any questions or comments? No, 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 no. Okay. Thank you very much for your attention to this detail, and I would move to approve item twelve. He said it first. Please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved, five-zero.
Thank you again. Item thirteen, future agenda. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. So, I am looking to add onto a future agenda a potential resolution to oppose SB seven. This is information that was shared at California League of Cities. And SB seven, essentially what it does, it arbitrarily inflates RENA numbers, loss of city rights to appeal RENA, denial of the infrastructure of impacts and risk of financial distress, failure to support RENA methodology with robust economic theory, and reduces accountability on unelected bureaucrats. So, I'd like a resolution to oppose that.
Just curious to clarify, is that, or is the League of Cities proposing to oppose it?
They recommend that we, yes.
Okay. I can get behind that. Anybody else? Okay. We'll move on to council member subcommittee reports and other reports, and I'll kick us off this time. Today, I had an opportunity to go to the San Diego Rescue Mission North County Huddle, just a group of people getting together, talking about homelessness. It was interesting. They interviewed me and had an opportunity to share some of my experience and my story. This morning, I also went to the Jimmy John's grand opening, which was interesting. They gave the first twenty-five people in line free subs for a year, and so apparently there had been people camped out in front of there for quite some time, trying to get their hands on free subs for a year. That building in particular that he is leasing, though, it's twice the size that he needs. He's waiting for Dunkin' Donuts, for the rights to Dunkin' in this area to open up, and he's going to add a drive-through Dunkin' Donuts into that same building when the time comes. Man, I had a subcommittee meeting at Sandag to appoint the representatives to the Independent Taxpayers Something Commission. I can't remember what it stands for, but they basically oversee the process on how your transnet dollars are spent. I was surprised, the only two people we interviewed were the same two people on the committee, so maybe next time we can get some more applicants for that. And then for our transportation subcommittee, we actually did regional workshop planning with all of the other committees for about two hours, which went over, actually not as bad as usual. So, I will end with that and move on to the deputy mayor.
Thank you. I've been meeting, I met with the Clean Energy Alliance CEO yesterday, so I had some feedback for him that he took well, and I think we have exciting, good things coming up, I should say. Met with constituents regarding a new development that's happening nearby, and as always, thank you to my community for the privilege of serving you. That's it.
Councilmember Martinez?
All righty. On Monday, I hosted a community forum with the North County Gang Commissioner, Agno Medrano. It was well-attended. It was a community forum to discuss violence in the community, since there has been an uptick in gang violence and a lot of violence involving youth. And now that it's summertime, we know that there aren't a lot of opportunities for young people, so we want to make sure we offer resources and support for them. So, we talked, we engaged the community in being part of the solutions, and shared some opportunities for free boxing classes for youth, and offering more things for youth to do, as well as a pretty comprehensive presentation on the different gangs that exist in the city, as well as things to look out for parents to be aware of with their children. And the temperatures are starting to rise, as you've probably noticed. You can still get a free cooling towel. Those are available for residents of Escondido at the Education Compact Office, which is near the library. Their office is 220 South Broadway, and you just ask them for a free cooling towel, and they're there while supplies last, and they open Monday through Friday, eight to six p.m.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, just a couple of things. I had an NCTD board meeting last week on Thursday. In addition to that, I have met with those in favor of the Seguro Energy Storage Project to have a discussion, and I will be meeting with those that are opposed Friday to have a discussion also. I also had a meeting with Enterprise Mobility. I was wondering what Enterprise Mobility was. As we began our discussion, I asked the question that Enterprise Mobility is the, kind of like the mother company of Enterprise Rent-A-Car, and they do a lot more than just rent-a-cars, that rent vehicles. So, I thought it was a great discussion that we had and offered. They offered their employees and their support for community projects and ideas here in the city. So, that concludes my report.
Real brief. I also had the opportunity to meet with the Seguro Battery Energy Storage Project reps, as well as discussions with those who oppose that project. Was able to attend the Escondido Police Department briefing yesterday and do a ride-along, for a five-hour ride-along. It was quite enjoyable and very, very insightful. Multiple interactions with many, many different residents and business owners and project proponents over this past week. Tomorrow, we have quarterly Regional Solid Waste Association meeting over in Solana Beach. I'll be also attending the Palomar Health President's Council in the afternoon, and Mr. Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Garcia and I will be arm-wrestling as to who will be attending the CEA board meeting tomorrow, so.
You're old. Christian can take you.
Yeah. I'm wily.
City Manager? Oh, you forgot. Go ahead.
The city will, I forgot one thing. The mural. Remember, we went to the mural. Were you gonna, were you next?
That was two weeks ago.
The Palomar one, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, Deputy Mayor and I had an opportunity to go to the unveiling of the mural at Palomar, the campus here in Escondido. Beautiful mural to hear the stories and how it came about. Our planning commissioners, all of them were there, and... all of them were there, and explained how this came about, it was just wonderful, and to see and to be able to look at the design, and I don't know if they noticed it, but somebody who was sitting with me said, hey, that looks like, in Spanish you say, "virete", but a cap, a graduating cap, and it's like, oh, yeah, it hit it, kind of hit it in the tower, and there was all kinds of beautiful stuff, but we did that, and I forgot to mention it, and that was just the highlight that I had last week.
The city will be hosting our annual fireworks show on Thursday, July fourth, at nine p.m. The fireworks can be viewed from anywhere in downtown Escondido, including Grape Day Park. Prior to the fireworks show, the California Center for the Arts will be hosting their annual Independence Day celebration, starting at four p.m. There will be live music, activities for children, and food merchants. The event is free to attend.
Do you have any other public comments?
Yes, we have two speakers. First is Cedric.
My name is, wow, okay. My name is Marquis Cedric DeVoe Gilmore Garcia, running Realize and Pillage Dobbs. I'm the oldest of twenty-eight kids, I speak three languages. I've been, my mom was fourteen years old when I was born, and when she turned eighteen, she kicked me out, and I lived on the streets. I lived on the streets for sixteen years, homeless. Instead of complaining about it, I lived with the homeless, found out how they were forced to live, and it's embarrassing, it's outright embarrassing. I lived here in this city, many years ago, homeless, and I went to Interfaith and asked them for help, and the nearest housing is eight to ten years in Oceanside. That's what they told me to do, is go to Oceanside to figure out the answer, because there is, breathe a second, give me a second, just. I love this city, it's one of my favorite cities to be in, but no, this is hurtful. Things, I was denied food. I went to Interfaith and got food that one day, I went there two days later, no, the next week, I went there the next week. They said that I can only go up there once every two months. That has not changed. There's only four places to eat in this city that are on this distribution thing. These are the things, everything that is here is what is given to me by Interfaith and by other homeless shelters in this area. The lack of shelters, the lack of care, the lack of even trying, because I was here and I experienced it already, and I'm here again, ten years later, and it's still the exact same thing. So glad you guys are making strides, I'm proud of it. If someone would like to talk to me, I can leave this here, up there, wherever. I'm all about making this city better, because I love being here, it's one of my favorite cities on the West Coast, but this is, this isn't. I was, I traveled from California to Texas, walking, went through all their encampments. I've been to every single encampment, every, everything you can possibly imagine with them, and, I can't do it, no.
Leave your contact information with the gentleman at the end there, please.
Our final speaker is Joe Rowley.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, appreciate this opportunity. I'm an Escondido resident, my name is Joe Rowley. I moved to Escondido in nineteen sixty-eight, so I've been here for a while. Graduated from Orange Glen High School. I likewise love this city. I spent many years developing large-scale power projects. I was director and then vice president of project development for Semper U.S. Gas and Power, and since retired. And in that capacity, had the opportunity to develop the Palomar Energy Facility that's located here, and co-developed the Escondido Research and Technology Center, where the hospital, Palomar Health, is located, and done many, many other projects in other areas. I bring that all up really just to point out that I've had a long constructive history with the city, and I want to be able to support the city in any way I can. Mention was made of the Seguro project, that project is not located anywhere near my home, I'm not personally affected by it, but it does raise an important issue. The advent of battery energy storage systems, it's here and it's not going anywhere, it's only going to get bigger and bigger. The County of San Diego has decided to adopt or to promulgate an ordinance to address where these things should be located. As a developer of projects like that, I had, we had our company ethos, and I had my own personal checklist of where projects like that should or should not be located. The Seguro project absolutely does not pass muster. It's very problematic, but it does raise a broader issue. The better energy storage projects are going to be proposed inside your city limits, you already have a couple, a couple of them are well-sighted, but it's been made abundantly clear that we cannot trust developers to decide where the right place is to put projects like this. So I'd really like to pledge my support to the city. If you should decide to develop an ordinance or land use regulations regarding those types of facilities or any other large-scale power facilities, I'd be glad to support you in that effort, and again, thanks for the service that all of you provide.
Thank you.
No further public on the side.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned.